Hello, this is Joe Pearson, the project planner for this application. This is request for amendments to the River Park specific plan and development agreement. And amendment to the four properties development agreement. In this presentation, I'll be covering the following topics. Project location, background, project description, environmental review, planning commission meetings and recommendations, project labor agreements. District D and housing element consistency, staff recommendations, and the options before city council. Each of these are discussed in further detail and in the staff report. And attachments. The seven hundred and two acre River Park specific fund site is located in the western portion of Ventura County in the northwestern edge of the city of Oxnard. And is bounded by the Ventura Freeway to the south, Vineyard Avenue to the east, Central Road to the north, and the Santa Clara River to the west. The River Park specific plan area is currently under active development and operation. The four property site is located within the seven hundred and two acre River Park specific plan. Specifically at twenty seven hundred and twenty seven fifty North Ventura Road. The River Park specific plan contains multiple general plan designations as shown. These include commercial, residential, and public and resource protection. The sites that we will be focusing focusing on in this presentation are located within the regional commercial land use designation. The zoning designation is River Park specific plan. However, there are multiple land uses within the overall specific plan as identified in the zoning designations map shown. The units proposed with this project play a key role in the city's compliance with the most recent regional housing needs allocation arena. As detailed in the recently adopted twenty twenty one to twenty twenty nine housing element. The city's most recent arena allocation was eight thousand five hundred and forty nine units. The sites to accommodate this new arena allocation are identified in the new housing element. And are generally distributed throughout the city. The proposed housing in district D as well as the other housing locations in districts B and C were identified in the city's recently adopted housing element as shown. Together, they are an important component of meeting the city's arena allocation. The housing element identifies a capacity of nine thousand four hundred and twenty seven units as being available to meet the most recent allocation of eight thousand five hundred and forty nine units. This identified capacity includes the one thousand and twenty five units proposed with the applicant's request. The loss of one of these sites would significantly reduce the current housing buffer. In the future, should other projects not be approved? Or if they are approved at lower densities than are provided in the housing element. The identified capacity could fall below the current arena allocation of eight thousand five hundred and forty nine units. If that occurs, the city would be required to identify alternative housing sites within six months. The the process of identifying housing sites is a dumber process which takes into account many factors. Aside from feasibility, the most important factor is location. As it is anticipated that much of the future housing development will be higher density development, it is important to locate these future housing sites near both services and jobs. As well as transit and other amenities such as parks. Due to their proximity to the collection adjacent business parks, Highway one oh one and the substantial parks included within River Park. These locations were seen as ideal candidates for the additional housing required. Also, as further discussed in the general planning conformity section of the staff report. River Park is within a designated urban village, which is intended for more compact development in a mix of densities and land uses. Now for some of the background on the River Park specific plan. The River Park specific plan was adopted by the city council on September tenth, two thousand two, together with the general plan amendment, zone change, annexation, development agreement, and EIR certification. Related to the River Park specific plan approval. The original River Park specific plan allowed for the phased development of two thousand eight hundred and five dwelling units and two million four hundred and eighty five thousand square feet of commercial or office development. The original River Park specific plan was developed following the design principles of new urbanism and smart growth movements. Which emphasized the importance of mixed land uses in close proximities, communities scaled for pedestrian walkability. Limiting the need for automobile usage, higher densities, and the importance of physical design. Over the years since this adoption, six amendments through a park specific plan have been approved. The first was to include regulations for temporary uses. The second was a minor change in the land use designation on a small parcel from open space to commercial. The third was to allow for a freeway oriented pylon sign subject to approval of a design development review permit. The fourth allowed for three freeway oriented monument signs subject to approval of a DDR. And a electronic digital display panel for the pylon sign subject to the subsequent approval of a special use permit. The fifth amendment increased the maximum number of dwelling units from two thousand eight hundred and five to three thousand forty three. And reduced the maximum amount of commercial development from two million four hundred and eighty five thousand to two million ninety eight thousand square feet. The additional units were to be located in district D other park specific plan. The sixth amendment was to amend the text of the River Park specific plan to allow two monument signs in planning district C. Subject to approval of a DDR. On September tenth, two thousand two, the city council adopted ordinance number twenty six oh five. Which approved the existing River Park Development Agreement. The River Park Development Agreement or DA has been amended on five previous occasions. The purpose of these amendments included expanding the properties covered by the by the River Park Development Agreement. Altering the fees and other items as identified further in the staff report. On November eighteenth, two thousand eight, the city council adopted ordinance number twenty seven eighty seven. Which approved the existing forward development agreement between the owners of the project site and the city of Oxnard. This development agreement has been amended on one previous occasion, which allowed for changes to the fees. The River Park specific plan amendment will make text and map amendments to the River Park specific plan to induce a new high density land use designation within planning districts B, C, and D. Which would allow for residential development of up to thirty to eighty units per acre. As identified in figure two point B of the specific plan. It would also create a new apartment development type, revise planning area boundaries. Update the land juice table and update exhibits for consistency with the proposed changes. The new land use designation will be applied in combination with the existing commercial regional land use. It is important to note that the new high density housing and parking to serve the new housing could not be developed in place of the existing commercial development within the collection as currently proposed. This amendment would allow for the development of up to one thousand and twenty five additional residential units under the River Park specific plan in exchange for a reduction of up to approximately five hundred and sixty two thousand four hundred and fifty seven square feet. Of non-residential development potential in accordance with specified development scenarios as identified in this table. This table identifies the various development alternatives which would be either or choices. As it relates to district D, the residential development options would not require any changes to the existing commercial within the collection. The proposed River Park Development Agreement Amendment would generally allow for a time extension, impact fee modifications, and define future affordable housing requirements. Or specifically. These changes include the following. Extend the term of the DA for a period of five years to October tenth, two thousand twenty seven. Set applicable fees or set applicable impact fees at the rates effective September twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen, which were in effect prior to the May two thousand twenty fee increase. And these fees would be in effect for the term of the agreement, except as otherwise modified. The DA amendment would also recognize existing waiver of storm drain fees from the original DA. It would recognize existing credit to Quimby fees and provide a waiver for future Quimby and park related fees due to the amount of park space constructed under the build out of the River Park specific plan, which exceeds the city's requirements. It would recognize existing waivers of sewer fees for commercial development and provide a credit towards proposed residential. It would recognize existing credits and set growth fees at the rates effective September twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen for the term of the agreement. It would also set traffic impact fees at the rates effective September twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen for the term of the agreement. Continuing with these changes, the the development agreement would also adjust the mobility fee based on proposed development populations and provide credit towards the new mobility fee based on credit for existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities constructed as part of the build out of the River Park specific plan. The development agreement amendment would also provide a credit towards public art for the existing art in the collection and ensure that that level of art would be maintained. And then lastly, the amendment would set a fifteen percent affordable housing requirement for all additional residence units developed. The River Park Development Agreement limit covers the commercial properties within district C and D. No physical development is proposed with this request. And any future development proposals would be required to comply with the twenty thirty general plan, the River Park specific plan. Applicable development standards and permits which would include the requirement for a development design review permit or DDR. As part of the four development agreement amendment, a similar series of changes are being requested. These include extending the term of the DA for a period of approximately five and a half years to July first two thousand twenty eight. Setting applicable impact fees at the rates effective September twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen for the term of the agreement, except as otherwise modified. Waiving future Quimby and park related fees. This waiver is needed and is different from the River Park Development Agreement request. Because the four properties were not part of the original River Park Development Agreement. Which provided credit for the build out of the parks within the River Park specific plan. However, this property is part of the River Park specific plan. So the waiver is still being supported. The amendment would also adjust the growth impact fee based on proposed development populations. It would set the traffic impact fee at the rates effective September twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen for the term of the agreement. It would also set the drainage impact fee at the rate in effect September twenty four, two thousand eighteen for the term of the agreement. And it would also adjust the mobility fee based on proposed development populations and threat a credit towards new mobility fees. Based on credit for existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities constructed as part of the build out of the River Park specific plan. It would also allow for the payment of public art fees or the revision of public art onsite. It would also set the a fifteen percent affordable housing requirement for all additional residential units developed on the properties. And lastly, would set up a requirement for a maintenance agreement for the access road with Caltrans. The four development agreement amendment only pertains to these lots in the River Park specific plan district B and does not cover the rest of the River Park specific plan area. The remainder of the properties in the River Park specific plan are covered under the River Park Development Agreement. No physical development is proposed with this request. Any future development proposals would be required to comply with the twenty thirty general plan, the River Park specific plan, and applicable development standards. All future proposals would also be subject to compliance with Sequa guidelines. Getting into the environmental review, a environments consultant under the supervision of the planning division staff has prepared addendum number fifteen to the approved final EIR number zero zero dash zero three. To evaluate potential environmental impact of the proposed project. Addendum number fifteen to the final EIR was prepared pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. The addendum evaluated each of the development options. The denim for the project analyzed the changes between the original project and the proposed project options. One of the key issue areas that has been discussed is or was the traffic analysis. The roadway network for the River Park area was built out under the River Park specific plan. The proposed specific plan amendment will not alter the existing roadway system. Each of the properties identified for the additional residential currently allows commercial office and has access to the existing roadway system. A traffic study was prepared for the requested specific plan amendment and independently reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. As identified in the dental number fifteen, the traffic study concludes that build outs with the additional residential units instead of the commercial development would generate nine thousand three hundred and nine less average daily trips. Or approximately eleven point three percent reduction in trips. As well as seven hundred and sixty two less PM peak hour trips. Or a nine point eight percent reduction compared to the original River Park specific plan which was adopted in two thousand and two. There was only a slight increase of two hundred and twenty two peak AM trips. Again, as compared to the original River Park specific plan, which was again adopted in two thousand and two. The existing roadway network was found to be sufficient to serve the additional residential units. Additionally, the residential units will be required to pay traffic impact fees. For all issue areas, the addendum concludes that the project would not result in new or substantially more severe impacts than those identified in the prior EIR with the incorporation of the previously identified mitigations. Lastly, the original mitigations will remain applicable. And these mitigations will be applicable to any future development projects developed under this specific plan. Going through the planning commission meetings. On December sixteenth, two thousand twenty one, the planning mission considered each of the projects. At the hearing, staff's recommendation was that the commission recommend approval of the project requests as presented to the city council. After deliberation, the commission made a motion directing staff to remove potential residential development within district D from the specific plan amendment. In response, staff prepared a amended planning commission resolution without recommending approval of the project to city council without the residential very high land use designation in district D and removing the additional four hundred and twelve units associated with district D. And maintaining the potential commercial allowed. The commission made a motion recommending approval of the four property development agreement amendments to city council with the requirement that the property owner enter into a project labor agreement before the development of the four property proceeds at the same December sixteenth, two thousand twenty one planning commission meeting. No changes were requested to the proposed addendum to the final environmental impact report. At the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty two planning commission meeting, the commission made a motion recommending approval of the potential residential development within district D from the specific plan amendment request and recommending approval to the city council with the requirement that the property owner enter into a project labor agreement before the development of the River Park area proceeds. Again, no changes were requested to the proposed addendum to the final EIR. As noted previously, for both the River Park Development Agreement Amendment and the four properties Development Agreement Amendment. The commission recommended that the Development Agreement Amendments include the requirement that the property owners enter into a PLA before any residential development on the subject properties proceeds. A PLA, also known as a community workforce agreement, is a collective bargaining agreement executed prior to the beginning of a construction project or group of construction projects. PLAs are typically used for larger and more complex projects and by their terms necessitate worker representation by local labor unions. Determined portrayed on the covered projects. And to set forth basic terms and conditions of employment applicable to contractors. PLAs are typically negotiated between the project owner and the local building trades. Building trade council and or individual construction trade unions. PLAs typically require workers to have a membership in certain trade unions, at least for the time relevant to the project. By requiring adherence to various union collective bargaining agreements, PLAs also specify establishment of uniform work conditions, hiring procedures, wages, and benefits, management rights, labor disputes. Procedures to prevent work stoppages and agreement to adhere to the existing master labor agreements for the trades subject to the PLA. It is important to note that a PLA does not always require the use of local labor, however, it may be required as an element of a PLA. The PLA, the requirement for a PLA or project labor agreement is not a land use decision and is in general cannot be required by the city as part of a typical land use entitlement process. However, a development agreement is a negotiated agreement between the city and property owner. Therefore, the requirement to have a PLA can be included in a development agreement if both parties agree to the requirement. Since the applicants are requesting changes to existing development agreement that benefit the applicants and the city, the city can require as a condition of the city's approval of the requested changes to the development agreements that the applicant enter into a PLA prior to the issuance of permits for residential development on the subject properties. It's important to note that under this scenario, the city would not be requiring applicants to enter into PLAs that the applicants would have the option of declining to enter into a development agreement amendment that includes the PLA requirement. The commission's primary concerns as it related to the proposed housing in district D generally revolved around the loss of the existing parking at the collection, noting the existing parking problems within the collection and on the adjacent streets. With the residential development. And a belief that the added development would only exacerbate these problems. And the loss of this parking would adversely impact people's ability to attend events in the adjacent park. As well as further impacting parking in the adjacent neighborhoods during these events. The loss of some of the commercial development within the collection was also a concern that was raised. As previously mentioned, at the commission's public hearing on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, the commission recommended approval of the River Park specific plan amendment to city council without the resident without the residential very high land use designation in District D. Removing the additional four hundred and twelve units associated with District D and maintaining the potential commercial allowed in District D. With the change to remove District D, the River Park Specific Plan would allow for the development of up to specific up to six hundred and thirteen additional residential units under the River Park Specific Plan in exchange for a reduction of up to approximately three hundred thousand, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven square feet of non-residential development potential. Again, in accordance with specified development scenarios identified in the staff report. Following the commission meeting, to provide clarity as to the possible locations of the housing within District D, staff worked with the applicant team to update the River Park Specific Plan land use map to better reflect the existing conditions within District D. This up, this update does not alter the quantity of development or expanded beyond its current boundaries. The change will only update the land use map again to reflect the current development patterns within District D. As shown in the updated map, the new housing designation within District D clearly overlaid the existing parking lots. As proposed, the new house, new high-density housing and parking to serve the new housing cannot be developed in place of the existing commercial development within the collection. The commission was not presented with a conceptual plan or plans which showed what future development in District D may be designed to be. The, in response to the concerns mentioned by the commission, the applicant has prepared a illustrative concept plan showing how the development of this area within District D could potentially occur. While this is a concept and the applicant would not be required to follow this plan in the future, it does help provide a visual of how the site could be developed in compliance with the standards proposed. As proposed, the new high-density housing and parking to serve the housing could not be developed in place of the existing commercial within the collection. The request before the City Council only sets the standards which future development proposals will be held to. Also, to clarify, this project is not allowing additional development. The River Park Specific Plan Amendment only allows for an alternative development for residential instead of commercial. Under the existing River Park Specific Plan, the existing parking lot could be removed and developed with commercial and office uses. And as with any development within this parking area, under the existing River Park Specific Plan, any development would require a development design review permit. As part of the discretionary review of the development design review permit, parking for both the future development and existing commercial development within the collection would be required to comply with the parking requirements of the River Park Specific Plan. The current River Park Specific Plan Amendment is not proposing to alter the current commercial parking requirements for the collection. So any parking removed will be required to be replaced in compliance with the current parking regulations. Since this project began, there has been multiple public notices sent out. A community workshop on the specific plan amendment was held August seventeenth, two thousand twenty. Planning Commission meetings were held on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one and January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Public notice signs were posted in three locations corresponding with the proposed land use changes as well as a fourth sign for the four properties Development Agreement Amendment located at the four property site. To date, approximately five thousand seven hundred and forty notices have been mailed out to the property owners within River Park and within the surrounding three hundred feet. Additionally, newspaper notices have been published for both the Planning Commission Meeting and City Council Meeting. Given the various project components, staff has prepared three options for council consideration. These include the applicant's original request, which is supported by staff, a reduced project alternative based on planning commission's recommendation, and lastly, the planning commission's recommendation on both the specific amendment and the Development Agreement Amendments. Starting with option one, or the applicant's original requests and staff's recommendation, this option would allow for residence development in districts B, C, and D of the River Park Specific Plan, totaling a maximum of one thousand and twenty-five additional units as provided in attachment D of the staff report. Also, no project labor agreement would be required by the city for future development. Option two, or the reduced specific plan amendment alternative would allow for residential development in districts B and C of the River Park Specific Plan totaling a maximum of six hundred and thirteen additional units as provided in attachment E of the staff report. No project labor agreement would be required by the city for future development of these sites. And lastly, option three, or the planning commission's recommendation would allow for residential development in districts B and C of the River Park Specific Plan, totaling a maximum of six hundred and thirteen additional units subject to the applicants first entering into a project labor agreement. Under this option, the City Council would continue the item to a date uncertain for consideration of the Development Agreement Amendments and Specific Plan Amendments as well as the certification of the environmental document.